All right, we'll call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock, take your roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Wakefield.
Here.
Knutson.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Brooke.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, before we get started, I just want to, if anybody is here expecting to have a conversation about Royview Home, because we had said that that was going to be on the agenda at the last meeting. We said we would place it on this, this week's agenda. That has been pulled, or actually not pulled, but requested not to be on the agenda by council member Brooke. And so if anybody's here for that, we're not going to be taking that up tonight. And if you saw that it wasn't on the agenda, that's why, okay? Next up, citizen comments. This is your opportunity to comment on any subject relevant to the city except for items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you do have a comment, please come to the podium, identify yourself, give your address, try to keep your comments brief, try not to repeat other people's comments. So, does anybody have a comment? Any comment? Any comment? Any comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have presentations today, Arbor Day proclamation. Do I have that in front of me?
Should be in there. You just... There you go. Read it.
Thank you. Whereas trees are among Hudson's most beautiful and natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation as well as improvements for our homes and public lands and are indispensable to our ecology as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, and air filters. And whereas Hudson has been named a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 15 years in recognition of the outstanding efforts by the city and its residents to provide the legal basis, financial investment, and community participation to support an ongoing program to plant, nurture, and routinely maintain and restore their canopy of trees. And whereas the demands on our environment and our environmental resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values as well as an individual commitment to the study and appreciation of trees and their maintenance. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Rich O'Connor, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 26th, as Arbor Day in the City of Hudson and call upon all citizens to participate in the Arbor Day celebration and continue to support and protect our trees and woodlands. So, and next up, we have the Pollinator Proclamation.
Pull that up for you.
Whereas pollinators, including bees, butterflies, and other insects, are essential to the health of our local ecosystems and food systems, playing a vital role in the pollination of crops and wild flowers. Whereas pollinator populations are facing challenges, including habitat loss, pesticide use, and climate change threatening our food security. Whereas protecting pollinators requires a collective effort, and we should take proactive measures to safeguard their habitats and ensure their continued survival. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Rich O'Connor, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Pollinator Protection Month in Hudson, Wisconsin. In so doing, I urge all residents to plant pollinator-friendly gardens, reduce pesticide use, create pollinator habitats, and spread the word. Okay? All right, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from April 7th, 2025, regular council meeting, and the April 15th, 2025 organizational meeting. Approve claims of the amount of $545,676. Approve the tree application from Hudson Home and Garden Club. Approve the memorial application submitted by Nathan Hall. Approve Festival Foods Turkey Trot 2025. Approve the 2025 room tax... Is that supposed to be on consent? Is this wrong? Is that what you have? Approve the 2025 Room Tax Community Subsidies. Approve the SCBA compressor and fill station from McQueen in the amount of $49,311.43. Approve amended development plans for 2040 Maxwell Drive, the Gerard Development. And approve Resolution 1325 for the final plat and final development plans of 515 Stage Line Road, Cantor Crossing, Twin Cities Land Development LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion second to approve. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Wakefield.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Discussion possible action on the letter of engagement with Bolton and Mank in the amount of $21,800 for engineering services related to the Sixth Street steps repair.
All right, I think most of you are here for the Finance Committee, and we're on Public Works Committee, so I guess I will just open up to questions if you have anything for me in discussion.
I think a follow-up to what was discussed during Finance, and Randy, you had mentioned, you know, it's a stairway to nowhere. I like that. High, you know, stairway to heaven.
Well, I didn't say that.
I saw this a little different. It already exists, number one, so we're not just building something to say, hey, this would be kind of cool. It's sort of an amenity that we thought has been, has some history to the city. And the idea that, that, you know, whether it be an act of God or whatever, you know, washed out, that, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't then just take the stairs and throw them away. That was a great idea for a couple of years, but, but they got washed out. So, you know, to me, that was, that, we're basically rehabbing them and kind of keeping them in the history of Hudson. So again, I just, I just want to make that point that it, part of the reason I think we were moved with Public Works is that we're bringing it back. We'd hate, let's say the boat launch got washed out in a bad flood, we wouldn't want to say, boy, it's too expensive to replace that, taking an amenity away from people that's already existed, so.
But we have to make a conscious effort of bringing up that point. Because others may think it's excessive for stairs.
Yes.
And that's why I brought it up.
Understood.
When were they originally installed, Mike?
I asked around, I couldn't, I couldn't find anything in our files either when they originally installed.
Scores of years?
Seventies. Sixty.
Who's been here as long as? Does anybody remember not having stairs at the end of Sixth Street?
Yes, I can't remember not having, I mean, I've been here for thirty-some years. I know, Randy, you've lived here the longest of us here, how long can you remember those?
They've always been there.
So.
Yeah, I mean.
And you're forty?
It's one thing if they were.
I'm forty? Yeah, thank you.
As Joyce pointed out before, they were originally installed for some utility, right? Whereas now, I don't, I think that utility probably doesn't exist, it's just a matter of... They're there, and we shouldn't take them away, I guess, is the argument.
Well, like I said, I mean, safety, yes, and then we took the stairs out over here on the third street.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Not to mention the ones we took out here in the front of the building.
Well, that's a different topic. You know, I guess it can hurt to take a look at, but it's just an excessive price tag for a very limited few that probably will use it.
Yeah, I think the best thing we could do is do some more investigating and get a more firm, you know, grip on what has happened, what the fix is, come back to probably council, kind of say, here's what we found, here are kind of the options, and we go from there. Then we can have some more serious discussions on full replacement, Band-Aid, permanent fix, so on, hopefully there's some options for us moving forward. But we don't know until we start doing some borings and taking some looks at, you know, the effects of retaining while nearby, so on and so forth.
And.
To approve.
Second.
We have motion second to approve, any further discussion?
Well, I did want to say, my other comment was, we discussed that we could just tear them out, because to have stairs in disrepair like that, you know, just barricading them doesn't seem that great for safety either. So that has to be a consideration, you know, whether we would move forward, but I couldn't. We need to get some prices and some numbers, get some engineering.
Anybody else?
I have one additional point. I would like to say, as someone who lives right by those steps, they, they get used often when they are functionable. And so I think our community members that live right in that area and up in the hill have absolutely, we have responsibility to provide options for them, so.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Next, Mike. Discussion possible action on Resolution 12-25 approving 701st Street as permanent location of the Hudson Area Library and authorizing the Library Board and Library Foundation to proceed with plans for expansion of the existing building and fundraising to support the project. Shelley?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm going to ask Sam Carey to come up. He is president of the Hudson Area Library Foundation, and he will speak to the resolution, and I will be here if you have any additional questions for staff.
Sam, welcome.
We should ask you about circulation?
Circulation? Yeah, there's that. And by the way, those stairs have been here even longer than you're alive. Harold. All right, I better get on with it here. So, in front of you is this resolution that was drafted and hopefully will be considered for adoption tonight. The status of things are, the Hudson Area Library Foundation, for well over a couple of years, has been focusing on what to do with the existing building in terms of expansion, use, once the police department leaves. And we have done a number of things in order to get to the point that we're at right now. And the number of things is that we, we hired a library strategies, paid a considerable amount to them for doing a community needs assessment to ascertain what the community is looking for by way of a library facility, and look at the pros and cons of the existing location to other possibilities. Once they completed their work, we then hired the Leo Daily Company to do a report on a facility options, and they looked at four different options. One, just the existing building as it sits right now, then with some expansion within that, with the police department vacating, also possibly expanding into the lower level, which is the parking area. And then they looked at option, what we call Option Three, which is to use the existing space to expand into the police department space, renovate the entire interior of the facility, and then expand. The expansion would be in the northeast corner of, of the building, and that would probably add somewhere in round numbers to about 8,000 square feet. Gets us to about a 32,000 to 33,000 square foot facility, which according to the things that we've looked at, would meet the future needs of the Hudson community, the greater Hudson area, all the, the service area that includes obviously the townships as well. So, once we received the daily report, it was then decided that we need to go to the Library Board and ask the Library Board if they would support the foundation's recommendation, which is to use Option Three to, which is the, which is the expansion in, of the existing building with the renovation. We appeared to the Library Board, they approved our recommendation, and so right now it's before you, after the Library Board, and the Hudson Area Library Foundation have asked that this be the project going forward. We're at the stage where we now will be looking to have a feasibility study done. The number, the project cost for this is $17 million. That's a large amount of money, and we're going to have a feasibility study done in order to determine whether or not it's likely that we're going to be able to accomplish that kind of fundraising. And then the company that we've hired, which is ACB, which is American City Bureau, that company not only would do the feasibility study, but also would be leading the campaign, the fundraising campaign. That's going to cost us more money. And before we embark onto, into that effort, we need to make sure that we have the support of the city council through this resolution, that we know that this will be the permanent location for the Hudson Library. We can't go to, we can't go to potential donors, institutions, other foundations, ask for money to support a $17 million project, only to have four, five, or six years from now find that we're going to be moved out to the Business Park or some other location. So the permanency of that building for the library is critical to engaging in this process. Hence the resolution. I'm open to any questions before we get into any more detail.
Anybody? Do you have a motion?
I'll move the DAP Resolution 12-25.
Second. All right, we have motion second, discussion?
Yes, I have comments, thank you. First of all, thank you as the president of the Library Foundation. I know that there's, if you look on the website, the list of the Hudson Area Library Foundation Board members are people that have served probably for decades, and it is a volunteer position, and I know you not only give your time, but your money. There's been a lot of money raised in the last few years by the foundation that has really helped maintain programming and other activities in the library, and is very appreciated. And I just want to make note of that, that I think when you look at people who are volunteers and active in our community, not necessarily all Hudson residents, they are people that care about Hudson's library, though. And so they've worked hard on it and to raise that money, and very supportive of this, they are very supportive of the staff and all the projects. My concern is looking at this, that I think it's the cart ahead of the horse for us. I don't think as the council, we can be in a position right now to promise that this is, I mean, permanent's a big word, your attorney, respect to you, Mr. Carey, that's a very big word. And so I want us to bear in mind that we also can't bind future councils to something, so why would we commit to an arrangement that, you know, isn't really the assurance that they would like to have, in my opinion? I, I understand what you're saying, the way you're wording is that you want our support and that we stand with you, and so on, but to adopt a resolution that says permanent location, so on, I mean, we're just not in a position to do that right now. I, my second point is that as council members, we need to bear in mind, hopefully within the next two months, we will be bonding with our elders, with our outside firm that helps us bond for municipal projects, for maybe three to four times as much money as the City of Hudson has ever, ever done. That's what we're proceeding with this summer. A huge bond.
But there's no request here for bonding.
I know that, but I'm asking for fiscal responsibility and consideration. So, yes, if the city got to a point that the funding and the maintenance of that building, that has been discussed before, and kind of, I felt brushed aside, what, what the library contributed to the maintenance of that building. So, I feel that it's, no, I realize they're not bonding, of course not, but that's, that building is an asset that we need to maintain control of. And it, it's a challenging issue when you look at the state of Wisconsin, and I, and I've told the library director and other library supporters, you won't see me trying to control your programming, or your collection, or what's on there, because I realize that's a boundary we, we don't cross. The state of Wisconsin has established the Board of Trustees who are appointed by the mayor and approved by us to manage the budget that we allocate to them. That, that is the one thing, is we do allocate funding for them each year. So I'm just concerned, in other words, that's a really important asset to promise, yes, you can have the whole building for perpetuity, when financially, we don't know what our boundary rate is going to be in two months. I'm sure you all are following the news, it's up and down. And so I'm just concerned, again, a little too soon, a little too soon for it, and so I would encourage the foundation to move forward, you know, a lot of fundraising projects do go with, let's get some seed money, because that's a good way to excite other people when you paint the vision that, and I'm sure your hired fundraisers, your professional group, I've seen that done in churches, where, you know, you get one or two big donations, and then more people come along with it. So I, again, appreciate how much work and involvement it has taken from the volunteers that are serving, out of their passion and commitment to our Hudson library. My final point, though, is also, I do think this is out of order for it to be a new business. According to our municipal code, Chapter 23, which regulates common council, reading and referral of ordinances, all ordinances, resolutions, communications, and so on, from the council, it comes to the council, should be read by title and referred to the appropriate committee by the mayor. And I feel like this is something that the Finance Committee could definitely have further discussions on. Not to say no, absolutely, but I think we should have further discussions, not just adopt this resolution, and I do think that is provided for in our code, that we are supposed to do it that way. So I am asking for consideration on those points. And again, I understand that that is a very, aesthetically, it's a very desirable, and location-wise, very desirable building. It has its challenges, you've had architectural input about, you know, load-bearing walls and things like that, we all know those issues down there. So, I do think if the foundation had some seed money, they could get started on that, while we still have a few more months to talk in consideration, because we have some very big financial issues in front of us. And the economy and the bond market may affect us as a city, and again, that's an important asset that the city owns, and I'd like to see it carefully considered. Thank you.
Sam, any?
Well, Joyce, thanks for your compliments directed to the foundation. They have worked very hard. The folks in this whole section right here are foundation board members. I don't think it's, and I'm not in, into the fundraising business, I don't understand, you know, all the nuances of fundraising, and I don't pretend to, but just common sense tells me that you need a tangible goal in order to solicit donors and maintain credibility with them. If one were to simply say, well, we'd like to raise some money because we think we're going to be in this building for a while, it's not going to go anywhere. It's not going to get the necessary support from donors who are looking at this ultimate goal of this building serving as the location of the library for the indefinite term. And I agree with you, I understand the term permanent raises all sorts of questions in terms of what does that mean? I guess what I would probably say is, best definition would be foreseeable future, something like that, but bottom line, it's gotta be where we're going to be for a long period of time. Otherwise, I don't think that this, this effort on our part is going to go anywhere. I don't think it's going to be successful, and I don't know whether our fundraising people who we're going to hire, or we may hire, depending upon what you folks decide tonight, I don't know if they would say, yeah, just go out and see if you can raise some seed money. I think even with seed money, you're looking for major donors who need to know what's the project, what's longevity of the project, what's the permanency of the project. And I understand the economic issues that the city is facing, I mean, our country is facing, you know, some economic turmoil right now. And that's the other part of this thing. We're going to depend on our fundraising people to tell us about timing, because timing in a fundraising effort is critical. Is, is this a good time to do it? Is this not a good time to do it? Are we competing with other organizations who are trying to raise money? I just talked to my, my son, who's with the boosters, and they have, are going to be proceeding with a baseball field project in the town of Hudson. And so there's competition out there for, for charitable dollars, and we're going to have to depend on our experts to tell us when that is. And so I don't know that operating with, starting out with the seed money is, is going to be what they're going to recommend. I would simply ask the, the council to adopt the resolution.
What is, go ahead, I'm sorry, Lynn, you go. What is the status of the location right now considered with permanency? How is it worded now? Where the library, what it currently occupies, how is that worded?
Frankly, to my knowledge, there is no existing contract, there's no existing lease, there's nothing that talks about the length of time that the library would be there. It was simply the library occupied that space, the history is, is, you know, I think known to many, the library occupied that space after they left the Fourth Street space, and they went to Fourth Street after they left the Carnegie Building and all that kind of thing. But I think it's just been a matter of where it's been moved to, I don't believe that there's any agreement to that point.
All right, having said that, however, this is a well-documented plan, that when that building was bought, the library moved in, and the police department moved in, that within five years of the actual purchase of that building, the police department was going to be moving out, and the library was going to be taking over the entire building. So, no, but to the extent of whether there was any type of long-term lease or anything, and I, I don't know, but.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor. There was a lease when we had a joint library. The joint library had a lease because the partners, the library partners, of course, had to agree to their commitment, and the city of Hudson has gone above and beyond in helping the library, maybe not always getting credit dollars on the line, because we provide the maintenance staff, and I happen to know that after the open house, after the big storm, there was a spill on the carpeting in the children's area, juice or something, and you know, who is doing that? Our Public Works employee is cleaning that. So we have, you know, we've worked together, let's put it that way. I don't know how much financial credit we've been given, I've asked for that to be included before. I specifically asked this council to require a lease of our municipal library, and I got no traction from you or the private, the prior city administrator, that we should have a lease with them, because I do understand that the Library Board of Trustees has the right, I mean, if they suddenly were gifted a fabulous building, they could move out in 60 days. With, you know, we would, should at least have a notice, a lease to protect them and protect us, but we do not have one right now. We did have one before, I requested the council to do it. I mean, I think everyone, we want to encourage and support the library, but we do have to be fiscally prepared, because we've got a lot of other issues in the city, dollars spent on roads and repairs, and if we need a new police officer, things like that, you know, money has to be, we have lots of things to take care of, their focus is the library, and that's natural. But I would support getting a lease, I would support that, as a way that we could move forward. I want to comment on the idea of the police department moving out. To finish your comment, Mr. Mayor, I believe that it was the goal at the time of the Hudson Library Foundation to raise up to $5 million to buy it from the city. That was the plan 15 years ago.
And that's when it was a joint library.
It was a joint library.
Our partners needed to have some skin in the game.
They did, but I'm seeing, when you said that the police department moved, moved out and the library would have the whole building.
Right.
You're implying that a, it seemed to me that you might be implying that a promise had been made to the library, that they'd have the whole building. The Hudson Foundation, Library Foundation Board had a plan to raise $5 million.
I fully understand.
Yeah.
My point was about.
It was a difficult time.
My point was more about permanency of the building as a location for the library.
Sure, and then there was a lease, again, at that time. And we do not have a lease right now, I think that we should both protect the city. We are separate entities, which is interesting, even though now they're our own city, it's not a joint library. North Hudson, town of St. Joseph, has no direct say in how the library is run, it is our responsibility. And one of the tricky things, and I do appreciate that you've hired architectural input, and I don't know all of the answers that have been provided, but are we, is, would there be another location that is, while it's not on the river and is desirable downtown, I do have worries about going forward with multi-floor library and staffing supervision, I mean, that has been a concern and has driven a need, as you guys all know, to have enough staff to manage all those floors. So if we expand, and is that the right thing? And I respect all the work and energy that's been put in. And I respect all the work and energy that's been put in. People are very invested in it and better understanding, but we need to have an understanding of that to make sure we're making the right decisions. So again, I just think we should spend some time in the next few months, perhaps, looking at this and talking about it. But I think, to be fair to all of our constituents, all of our taxpaying constituents, we should move carefully, because it is an asset that, you know, I hate to promise it to one entity, the library, when maybe there could be better ways of serving the whole community somewhere else.
Councilmember Knutson, where I am in agreement with you is, I don't want to rush this, and this feels like we might be rushing it a smidge. I feel it's important that we get constituent input, and I know there's been some sessions. It's been a while. I certainly would like to make sure that we are abundantly transparent with our community members on what the plan is and that this doesn't feel rushed in any way, so that there's greater community engagement. I feel like we have a responsibility to our taxpayers to do that. So I'm in agreement that I am uncomfortable moving forward with this tonight. I would like to know more, and I would certainly like to make sure our community members know more.
I'm not sure this resolution encumbers anybody as far, except for maybe the word "permanent." I don't see anywhere in it where it says, "We're handing the building over." Now, correct me if I'm wrong, whoever's smarter than I, but we're not handing the building to them. We're agreeing to give them the support to go out and seek the funds. Every organization has been doing that for years, to do it right, to see the buy-in from these investors, if you will. And there's no other way around that. They're not going to just say, "Ah, maybe I'll give you a million bucks." No, you want to go to a foundation where you can get $5 to $8 million, and they want to see the plan. They want to see a professional, laid-out architectural design plan and moving forward in it with a fundraising capital campaign. I have no doubt these folks are going to do that with the people that are on that board.
It does say permanent location under number one.
No, I get permanent, but...
What he's saying is, we're not giving the library the building. They don't own it. Let me, so, I mean, this is, it's kind of complicated, but then again, it's really not. You know, because this has been in front of us for so many years. This library has been an issue, an ongoing sore, frankly. And this brings an end to that. We have, as a city, as municipal partners, along with our other municipal partners, have woefully underfunded this library for many years and got away with it. And not that it was something intentional, because it wasn't.
Could you move closer to the microphone? Sorry, sometimes it's really hard to hear you. I apologize.
Fine. Can you all hear me back there? We have the exempt amount that is imposed upon us by the state. It's a formula that we are supposed to be contributing X number of dollars, as were all of our joint partners. I don't know exactly how this fell through the cracks or why. I believe that, to some extent, it had to do with our municipal partners never having to meet an exempt amount prior to forming the joint library. And therefore, they really didn't know the details in this. And they were signing off on what they thought, because they were contributing to the library. They were signing off on what they thought was their legal requirement. Where the city fell through the cracks, I have no idea how that happened. But we had always had to hit an exempt amount, and all of a sudden, we weren't. And in addition, other people that were asleep at the wheel was the county, who had complete oversight, final oversight, over certifying that we were hitting the exempt amount. And that was going on for years. And in all of those years, it amounted to the fact that we had underfunded the library by about half of what we were actually contributing, maybe 100% of what we were actually contributing over a period of time. So the library had been significantly underfunded, and then we got a fix that came from the legislature that called for a three-year average. As long as you hit this three-year average, you are exempt. Well, what happened was our municipal partners were, their three-year average, after a period of a couple of years, meant that there was no increase whatsoever coming from them, which meant that going forward, there would never be an increase from them if they so desired not to provide any additional increased funding. All right? Which was a bad fix. Honest face, it was a very bad fix. And created an even more burdensome problem for the library, because our funding then was really restricted. So now, with the departure of our partners in the joint library, now it falls back to the city. You're right. I mean, we were, we did have a lease, because we wanted our municipal partners to have skin in the game, because it was our building, and we were paying for it. You're right, you know, the maintenance and everything else. We needed to have some type of lease that was going to commit them to making payments to us. As our director, Shelley Tugus, has pointed out many times, since the city has taken over the municipal library, this is the only department that is renting space from the city in a city-owned building, which makes no sense whatsoever. None, in my opinion. And we are trying to phase that out over a period of time. All right? But now we're faced with this situation where the police department is, in fact, moving out. And the commitment that was made was that this building was going to be for the exclusive use of the library once the police department moved out. All right? So I don't think we're moving too fast on this at all. I mean, I agree with everything that Sam has, don't ever quote me.
On the record, right?
But I agree with everything that Sam has said here today, that in order to fundraise, people that are going to give money, even seed money, they're not going to give a big check unless they really know what that money's going to be used for and how. Now, keep in mind also, that all we're doing here is making a commitment that this will be, according to the city, this will be the venue for the library for the distant future. Permanency, I get that. And maybe that's a bad term. Maybe it's not. I don't have a problem with it. All right? But that's all we're doing, is committing to the people that the foundation is trying to raise money from, that we do have a venue that has been dedicated by the city for the future use of the library. This is not, by any means, approving the Plan B that's coming our way. It's a resolution. But we still have final approval of any of the plans that are going to be brought forward by the architect and by the foundation and by the library board, because it is our building. All right? So I don't believe we're moving too fast. I think that, and in fact, I mean, the foundation, as they were talking about entering into a contract with an architect and so forth, did a city-wide, well, actually, I believe, a service area-wide survey, not just citywide, but a service area-wide survey about the needs of the library and the potential of that being, the current site being a permanent site. So I don't think this is catching the community by surprise, especially given the nature of this discussion having been going on for years about what's going to happen with the library. So I would really like to see this pass tonight. I would like to get the foundation underway, because as Sam pointed out, well, just recently, the boosters have announced approval of going forward by the town, that opens the door for them to start a $14 million campaign for their facilities out there. We have other fundraising activities that are about to hit here that are substantial double-figure fundraising things that are going to be happening. And, you know, people are going to be going through their community with a vacuum cleaner here, a number of organizations, big organizations, that are all worthy of support. I don't know any that are as utilized, however, as our library.
So thank you for those comments. I really appreciate it. Just a couple other things I just wanted to add. Looking at the fourth option in this analysis that was done by the Leo Daily organization, that was the option of building new. And the cost there, as compared to our $17 million project, was $40 million, and that is exclusive of buying the real estate. That's just the construction. So it did not look like a very feasible goal for us. I mean, we could, we had to rule it out because of cost. I mean, in terms of trying to get support for a $40 million library in our service area, I think would have been almost insurmountable. So hence, we focused on this building, and I'll tell you that the enthusiasm for this building is shared by all these folks here, but by our growing number of supporters that we've seen over the last 10 years, since we have been a very active foundation, the number of supporters, as well as the amount of supporter dollars, has increased dramatically over that period of time. So we're feeling pretty good about our patrons, our supporters, who want the building where it's at. And in terms of transparency and community engagement, I'm going to turn this over to Shelley, because she'll explain to you that there has been a process that has taken place that invited the input of community members. Go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to address that point of community engagement. I mean, that's my background before I got into the library world. And we were very fortunate that the foundation paid for library strategies to come here and do a community needs assessment for us. It was based on, you know, the police are going to be moving. What do people in this community think we should be doing with that space, or as we grow overall entirely? And that process involved five focus groups, plus a SWAT analysis with staff. The consultants did a tour and analysis of our building. They did confidential, one-on-one interviews with seven key leaders who could help them understand the big picture, the history. And then we did an online survey. They wanted us to get 350 responses. That was key. We got 960. So that was incredible. We had a public meeting at the fire hall, so we had more space for people to come in and hear the full report, which has been on our website for up close to a year now. The Leo Daily report is on our website and has been for a good six months. We had key stakeholders come in and meet with the architects to talk about this space as they looked at the options. I am a consistent column writer and River Channel host of shows. And to me, the most important thing is, is we're a rare institution in that we have face-to-face contact with hundreds of people, let's say, 8,000 a month, and we hear from them. And they talk to us about space and what they want and what they see every day. We also know that this is a process, the community engagement is not done. It's not over. It is a continuous process as we go through hiring a fundraiser. Part of what they do is then help guide community conversations about the donations, what the donors think, because big dollars will drive some of these decisions. If we don't get them, we're going to have to look at the project again. We also, right now, have a survey up in our children's area, we've had that going for a couple of weeks, to ask people, if we had more space for a children's area, what would you want to see? How would that look? So these conversations continue. And some people pay attention, some people don't. We're hoping that we will get people in the community actively engaged in talking with the architects as we begin making final plans. But until we have that initial fundraising feasibility study, we really, we have nothing to ask anybody.
I appreciate all this extra information that you've shared, and I certainly was at that meeting, so I know what...
Yes, you, most of you were. It was great.
Most of us that are here were at that meeting. And I guess what I, not, I guess, the point I was making is, after I left that meeting, I knew the options, the ideas that were out there, but I didn't have a clear sense on what the library was thinking. And so that's where I'm, and, you know, maybe I missed an interview you did on the River Channel about this or something.
You don't go follow me every day on River Channel?
I'll add that to my list.
Yes, right.
Anyways, what I was referring to is, since that meeting, and I know about all that survey work and all that great stuff that you did, and I know you got tons of engagement. Somehow, it just feels like maybe an update on where we're at, because I know that when I left that meeting, I did not have a sense on what the library board or foundation was thinking of doing. And that is feedback I've received from constituents in the district I serve, which is also the district where the library is. Don't get me wrong, I want the library in downtown Hudson without a doubt. But that is feedback I have received.
Thank you for sharing that with me.
Well, and to that, I mean, without sounding snippy about it, because I sometimes do that, I mean, this is kind of the announcement of the direction that they're headed. Maybe it just happened right now, but, I mean, this is kind of, you guys are saying that's step one. We want that to be our home, and we need the commitment. So I look at it a little differently. You know, the library happens to already be in that building. We're talking about possibly expanding that. The same thing with, like, police department and Public Works. Those were existing buildings, that the city made the decision, we made the decision, to pounce on that, because it was a good financial decision, and we had the input from the professionals, the, you know, the staff, that the police would like that building. The Public Works would like that location, et cetera. I know it's not exactly apples to apples, but to some extent, the police has, we've named the new police station as their permanent home going forward. Same with the fire department. That is their permanent home. And we've decided that the library is worth the city of Hudson hanging on and having that be one of the basic city services that we provide. And to me, again, maybe I'm reading into it too much here, but the decision sort of, that is the path we're going. Stay in that building. And the other reason this has, my supporters, we're not signing off on a dollar amount right now. We're basically getting our ducks in a row, so we can approach this professionally and probably, you know, for the best benefit of looking for money. So I see it as we've made a commitment to have a city library, and that is, I mean, they're asking for us to say, "This is where it's going to be, not somewhere else."
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
All right. It's already on the floor? Okay. Anybody else? All right. All of us in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved. All right. Then we get into department head.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, board members, for being here today. I don't ever want to hear that come up, Sam, that...
It's recorded now.
Yeah. All right. Department reports. Start with the police department.
So our last month's calls for service list are listed in the issue sheet. Things aren't slowing down. We had a bunch of potential contractors walk through the facility this afternoon, the new facility, looking at different variations of their work that they might be putting a bid on. So that's moving along nicely. So we're hopeful that next week, when bids come back, that they are good bids. Other than that, here to entertain questions.
Questions? All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Fire department.
Good evening. Our monthly report for March was in the agenda packet. The only thing I would say is, it doesn't really show on here, but we are trending ahead of last year in call volume. So probably expect another record year. We did have another successful pancake breakfast last weekend. We had about 1,100 people came through the door. So that's the most ever that we've had, and we had very little food left over, which was good. So it was great community outreach. It was great to see everybody. It was really good weather for it, and it was well-received.
Thanks for, thanks for breakfast. Clerk report.
We wrapped up the spring election successfully. It was a pretty big turnout for spring elections, it's been the highest one we've had in the last, I don't know, six, seven years, so it was a 63% turnout. The liquor, liquor and tobacco licensing application deadline is here on the 23rd at 4:00 PM, and we still have about-
Eleven or so?
Eleven, twelve not received. So hopefully, the next day, by four-
We should probably say not received, or have not even called, contacted the fire department.
Yes, and there's no fire inspections either, so.
Inspections, yeah.
We got that. And the city is, I'm hosting our Wisconsin Municipal Clerk's District Two meeting, so that's pretty exciting, getting some people around our area to come to Hudson for-
Who's going to be here?
Yeah, yeah. So, other than that.
In the past, you used to break down the districts over the election, are those numbers available?
Ah, yeah, I can break them out, yep.
Just an email? I'm curious. Thank you.
Yep.
The percentages, or the actual numbers?
Actual numbers.
Outboarding in the districts, is that what you're saying?
You want, like, in-person, that type? Okay.
Oh, in-person versus-
Both, both, just the total number.
Yeah, we'll just get that, that'd be good to see.
I wanted to ask you a question, Becky, and you don't have to give absolute data, but just to kind of help cast the picture of what it's like handling all the absentee ballots. And I've heard you say before, how many times you actually have to touch and handle each ballot to get it out, and then you receive it. What's that look like for you and your, your, your staff?
I guess what part, like, the whole process?
Yeah, like, how much time and effort does that take? How many, when you receive that request, what are the steps that you do?
So from the time we receive the request, then it's a matter of getting the ballots, then we have to postage both envelopes, stuffing it, sending it out. Sometimes they don't receive it due to the mail or whatnot, so it could be doing that a second time, to, if they did not receive it and request a second one. By the time when it comes in, then we have to record it, we then store it, file it alphabetically per their district, and then it comes out at election day, and then it's, has to be manually opened, and then it gets, the name gets read off, and then it gets processed. So it's, all said and done, the process, I think, touching either the envelope or the, the one voter, it's 10 to 12 times.
For each voter that's requesting?
Yes, for each voter, yep.
And some people receive their mail, their ballot at home, but choose to come to the polls. They haven't mailed it in time, or they changed their mind, or-
Correct.
They're in Hudson, and then the-
So if it's on election day, there's paperwork, there's logs that have to be recorded, that, saying that they did not vote on their absentee ballot.
They have to bring it, turn it in, and then vote conventionally. And I was interested, when you commented, that when they mail it back to you, you don't open it, but you make a note of that it came back.
It's recorded in the state system, and date receive it. No, they do not get opened until election day.
Correct, election day, but people, I mean, a lot of people do utilize that state website to see, has my vote, so if someone mails it in quite promptly, they might be able to see, oh, it got to the city.
It'll show that it's received.
Yeah, it's received.
Soon as I record it, then it goes to that MyVote website to say that the ballot has been received back here.
So they can see that, oh, it got, the mail worked successfully, it got there. So that's reassurance for people.
Yes.
But otherwise, I imagine you get a fair number of phone calls about this.
To say the least.
Yeah, you don't want to count the hours that you spend on it, but thank you. I, I know, it's been interesting how the trend has been to a lot more absentee voting, and that's increased work. I mean, I think we talked about, just the cost of the postage is-
That too.
And the labor, so, anyway, thank you for all your work. Everything goes very smoothly-
Thanks.
-at our elections, so hats off to you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Becky.
Yeah.
Shelley.
So we have an exciting couple of weeks coming up. The Friends of the Libraries book sale is April 28 through May 4, and I've been able to poke around what they're doing, and there's some great books in there, and all the proceeds go back and support the library. So hope you're able to pop in and, or at least share the word with your friends and neighbors. The last day of that book sale is May 4, which is the Chambers Expo at the high school, and the library is going to be there. I didn't know, though, Mary Claire, did you know that it's May the force, May the Fourth Be With You Day, Star Wars Day? Okay, she knew. So I'm going to put you on the spot, because in our booth, we're going to have Han Solo, AKA Christopher Mick, and Princess Leia, yours truly. I have the cinnamon roll bun wig. I just want to know if you're going to be in costume? No. Okay. Well, she does have to run around a lot, so fair is fair. And the last thing I wanted to point out is, since we just talked about the Library Strategies report, as soon as that landed on my desk, staff, and I tore it apart, because there's a big chunk that's just sort of the policymaker's side, and then there are the things that staff could do immediately, or very, very soon, and so we looked at what some of those are. We heard that the children's department is phenomenal, the children's programming is exceptional, and they love, love, love everything we do for youth, but they thought we were falling a little short on adult programs. So we tackled that, and in 2024, January through March, la, so that would have been 2024, we had 21 adult-specific programs. This year, same time period, we've had 39. So the attendance for that period last year was 173. This year, with those changes, we have 439. So that's very exciting. Sometimes people say they want something, and you do it, and then they don't come, but they really did want it, and we're really excited to see the uptick in those numbers. Overall, our attendance at programs and the special activities that we have for the first quarter stand at 7,000 for attendance and participation. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Shelley. Sam?
Good evening, mayor and council. Finance department report for March 2025. The fieldwork for the financial statement audit was complete two weeks ago. There's a couple of outstanding questions for Kip and I, we'll hopefully get those completed in the next couple of days, and then get the financial statements in front of you, either at the last meeting in May or the first meeting in June. Those will be needed for our bond offering this summer. With that, early work on the, to tee up the 2025 bond offering, sending some preliminary numbers over to Ellers for them to start working on, and then work to fill the vacant accountant position. We have, have the position posted through Friday. We have a pretty good applicant pool, but please, if, if you're watching and thinking about it, please apply. Finance staff will be attending the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Spring Conference here on Monday and Tuesday, so Kathy and I are both going to head down to the Dells, and I think Clerk Egan is also going to attend. And then interviews for that position are on May 7, and then because there's never a dull moment in the finance world, we're going to get started on the 26 budget here, even though it's only April. With that, stand for questions.
Anybody? We'll let you get back to your excitement, Sam. City administrator.
Well, the, the report and bullet points are put out there. I don't really have a whole lot, we're going to be beginning in 20, well, Sam already stole all my thunder. The Budget 2026, I have the very last point, is we'll be getting some survey questions together, Sam's going to be looking at them probably this week, early next week, and in either beginning of May, the end of May, we'll begin with survey questions for our alderpersons and mayor, to give guidance on the budget departmental decision, directions, so you'll have those survey questions, essentially categorizing where you would like to see all our funds spent into the next year. So that'll be a start, something different into the budget, you'll see some different processes, as Sam and I are going to be working through that with you, so we'll be guiding you through the whole process.
Anybody?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate that, the survey component, but during the time that I've served, I don't think that has been done previously. And it, usually we get the budget delivered, and it's very complex, so it's hard to dive into, so it's appreciated getting input at the beginning.
Yeah, I, I want to have more involvement of the council and, and of course, our staff to inter-
Absolutely.
-interact a little more on-
Yeah, that's great.
-where we're heading in the budget. One thing, I did want to point out, I completely forgot, Ring Central, the very first and second week of May, City Hall is going to be turned over onto the new Ring Central system, which is our new phone system. If that is successful, well, it's going to go one or two ways. If it's not successful, you may not be able to contact City Hall for a week. I don't know if any of the employees at City Hall are going to mind, but if it is successful, then we're going to roll out to the other departments right away, the police department, library, on through sewer water, that type of thing, so. I, I think it's, it's, it's ready to go, I think it's going to be a smooth transition, and we'll be on our new system soon. That was the other major thing happening.
As a point of clarification, and I think that was in part tongue-in-cheek about not having access to a phone for a week, if that is the case, do we have some emergency backup plans, so residents can reach the city hall if that's needed?
Well, that's a good point. Egan, well, I don't know if we've settled, I, I don't think there's going to be an issue, but I think you have access to employee phone numbers.
Right.
Department head numbers.
I know I do. I was more worried about our community members, and if they ran into issues and needed to get in touch with somebody. So just please put that on your radar to think about having a Plan B in place in case the transition does not go well, and I'll be hoping it does go well.
I think it's more, more of a matter of just letting people know that we're transitioning to a new system, use the email system, that's probably it.
Excuse me, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? All right, just a note and a reminder, Deb Andrews' mother passed away, Betty King. She passed away on April 10. The visitation is going to be at Bach &amp; Young this Friday at 1:00 PM, so keep Deb in your thoughts and prayers, and maybe reach out to her if you haven't already, so. That's all I've got. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? Second? Motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.